One nation, under God, indivisible, for the living and justice for all.
That's right. Communication, this is Jen Joiner here this evening from Whitfield, and she would like to introduce a student. Ms. Joiner, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
It is an extreme pleasure to present this student tonight, who is actually currently a West student. She's a former Whitfield student. Last year, right around this time, we received notification from the Pennsylvania Academy of Dermatology and Dermatologic Surgery that Sidney Woods was the recipient of an essay contest. And this grant that she won was for a sunshade project. And as a result of winning the essay contest, Whitfield Elementary School was awarded a grant of $5,000 for a sunshade project in our school. So, the organization graciously allowed us, with everything going on last spring, to postpone it for a year, so that we could include stakeholders in the decision-making process, Sidney being the most important one, of what this would look like on our school campus. So, the plan with the money is to provide sunshades over our playground in the back, in addition to adding one, possibly two trees, for sun protection. So, Sidney is here tonight to share with you the award-winning essay. So, if you would please allow me to introduce her. Sidney is also going to receive a certificate from the organization, as well as an Amazon gift card for her hard work. So, with all due gift, here's Sidney.
Hi.
Good evening.
So, I'm gonna read my essay. Some people living in Pennsylvania don't understand the dangers of the sun impacting their skin. There are lots of different things we as humans should be worried about when it comes to the sun. While all of us love to play outside on the beach in the sun, the sun can be doing lots of harmful things to our skin. People think that sunscreen is just for when you're at the beach or at the pool, but it's important to wear sunscreen everywhere you go if you're planning to be outside. According to the article by HHS.gov, more than three, one in three Americans say that they get sunburned each year, and that's 33 percent. You may be thinking that 33 percent isn't a big number, but it is way too big. Also, according to the article by HHS.gov, over 9,000 people get diagnosed, or die from melanoma each year. Melanoma is the deadliest form of skin cancer and has diagnosed to more than 63,000 people. I can't imagine that many people dying by simply just not putting on sunscreen when they go outside. Thankfully, there are ways that we can prevent skin cancer before we get it. When you do any outside activity, if you're planning to be in the sun, wear sunscreen. It may look like the sun is not out, but that's when you get sunburned the most. Next, you can wear a hat. To protect your skin while swimming, you can wear a swimshirt or even swim leggings. Another way to protect your skin is a shade structure. The reason why I think our school should get the prize of a grant for a shade structure is simple. We have about 600 students in our building from kindergarten to fifth grade. This includes 31 special needs kids at our school. Some kids are sensitive to the sun. If we want them to be outside at recess and enjoy themselves, they need to be protected from the sun. You want kids to enjoy being out at recess, right? You need to protect them from the harsh rays of the sun. For kids at our school to enjoy their learning time, they need to be out at recess. With this, they need to be, they need to have a shade structure. Without this, kids might not want to go outside and get fresh air, and might want to stay inside and play games on devices. These are the reasons why I think people should spread awareness about the dangers of sun damage, and why Whitfield Elementary School should get a grant for a shade structure. With this grant, we can make the children at our school enjoy the fresh air, and we can also spread awareness about sun defense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Just a reminder to the board, after a notice of the board, we'll have a brief executive session after the meeting, and we will not be returning for business. Approval of minutes. Look for requests to approve the minutes of the school board meeting held on April 19, 2021, as attached. Looking for a motion? Mr. Case, do you have a second? Mr. Schneider, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Payment of bills, Mr. Martin.
Mr. President, my submit for approval of bill amount, tonight, $1,724,690.59.
Do you have a motion? Do you have a second? Mrs. Cocker, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Dr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Negreeny?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Superintendent's report, Dr. Faedley.
Thank you, President Hart. It's my privilege this evening to present the superintendent's report. Included in the report this evening are personnel and program recommendations. I would like to point to item number 4.4, professional hires. We do have one of our gentlemen here this evening, Anthony Ciato, who is on the agenda this evening to replace Dan Sekanek in the Business Department, as Mr. Sekanek is retiring this year. And I'm pleased to see Anthony here this evening. Anthony, if you'd please stand.
Welcome forward.
Welcome. All right, looking for a motion to approve the superintendent items 4.1 through 4.6.
If I could.
You may.
First, Mr. Hart. I would just like to say, on behalf of Southern parents, that it's gonna be a real loss to see Dr. Burnham go. He really was a wonderful principal. Comrade Weiser, I believe, is very lucky to be getting him. So, I'd like to wish him well in his new venture.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to approve the superintendent items 4.1 through 4.6, as attached. Mr. Martin first, do you have a second?
Casper.
Mrs. Casper, any discussion?
I would just like to second Mr. Schneider's comment about Dr. Burnham from this year as well. As a former Southern teacher, he is going to be very difficult to replace. So, he'll be sorely missed.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Dr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Negreeny?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Consent items, Mrs. Cocker.
5.1, request approval to step a $5,000 sunshade grant, 2020, from the Pennsylvania Academy of Dermatology and Dermatological Surgery. This grant was awarded to Whitfield as a result of former Whitfield student and current West 6th grader Sidney Woods submitting the winning essay to Pat. It will be used to add shade sales to the playgrounds and an extra tree for sun protection at Whitfield Elementary School. 5.2, accept with gratitude the following donation. From statewide tax recovery, a check for $200 to be used for a scholarship for a financially warranted student who is furthering his or her education. And from the Wilson Youth Softball Organization, a pitching screen for the varsity softball field batting cage valued in the amount of $499.95 for softball players of all ages to use.
Thank you. Looking for motion to approve consent items 5.1 through 5.2, as presented. Dr. Kennedy first, do you have a second? Mr. Martin second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Under Human Resources, request to approve Philip Cogdill, Special Education Supervisor, Act 93, for $97,132. Looking for a motion?
Cocker.
Mrs. Cocker first, do you have a second? Mr. Negreeny second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Negreeny?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Philip is in the, in the audience this evening. Phil, if you could please stand.
Good evening.
Congratulations on, on your acceptance as the new special ed supervisor for the Wilson School District. We're very fortunate to have you.
Congratulations. Student Services, Mrs. Cocker.
7.1, request approval to waive tuition in accordance with policy number 202 for a 6th grade student, West, to remain enrolled in the district for the completion of the 2020-21 school year. 7.2, request approval of the Karen Foundation Service Agreement for the Student Assistant Program for services during the 21-22 school year at a cost of $39,793, as attached. 7.3, request permission to contract with Capstone Academy for one special education student for 2021-2022 regular school year services at a cost of $84,731.40 for the school year beginning 8/30/21 and ending 6/10/2022, pending solicitor review and approval. 7.4, request approval of the 2021 ESY New Story Contract for three special education students at a cost of $380 per student per day, and one special education student at a cost of $280 per student per day. In the event the remote learning is implemented, the cost will be reduced to $280 per student per day, beginning June 21, 2021, and ending July 29, 2021, pending solicitor review and approval. 7.5, request approval, request to approve to make June 3, 2021, a half-school day for students. 11:00 AM dismissal for secondary students, 11:45 AM dismissal for elementary students.
Thank you. Looking for motion to approve agenda items 7.1 through 7.5, as presented. Mr. Martin first, do you have a second?
Schneider second.
Mr. Schneider, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Negreeny?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Dr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Under Technology, 8.1, request approval to enter into a 36-month lease with Dell Financial Services for student Chromebooks in grades 6 and 10. 8.2, request approval to enter into a 48-month lease with Dell Financial Services for student Chromebooks for grades 4, 5, and 9. 8.3, request approval to enter into a 48-month lease with Dell Financial Services for staff laptops and Chromebooks. 8.4, request approval to dispose of and recycle broken and obsolete technology with Sycamore International. Looking for a motion to approve items 8.1 through 8.4, as presented.
So, move Case.
Mr. Case first, do you have a second?
Schneider.
Mr. Martin second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Negreeny?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Dr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
9.1, request ratification of the purchase of bleachers for high school fields project from Stadium Solutions. Looking for motion to approve? Mr. Negreeny first, do you have a second?
Second, Case.
Mr. Case, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Negreeny?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Dr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Under Curriculum and Staff Development, 10.1, request approval of the Voyager sofas, we can preschool curriculum to be purchased with Berkshire Heights Early Learning Center budget. Looking for a motion?
Cocker.
Mrs. Casper first, do you have a second?
Cocker.
Mrs. Cocker, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Negreeny?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Dr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Under Transportation, 11.1, request approval of the Inter-Political Subdivision Bulk Storage Fuel Tanks and Fuel Station Agreement. Looking for a mo, thank you first, do you have a second?
Schneider.
Mr. Schneider, any discussion?
Yes, I just want to explain this. We've been doing this for many, many years. We decided to put this in writing, just to protect ourselves as well as where we're missing. We're gonna use our fuel tanks, and they'll be fueling their buses and the schedule with fuel, and they will be paid six cents for that privilege. So, this has been going on for some time, just more familiarity of putting into writing.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Dr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Cocker?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Negreeny?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Under Policies, 12.1, second reading of the following revised policies. 150 Title I, comparability of services, 810.1, school bus drivers and school commercial motor vehicles, and 810.3, school vehicle drivers. First reading of the following revised policies. 113.5, confidentiality in special education information. 137.1, participation of homeschool students in district programs. Under Miscellaneous, Dr. Faedley.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Four years ago, when I came to the Wilson School District as superintendent, one of the first administrators to come and meet with me was Dr. Steve Burnham. And as time went on, we continued to meet every couple of weeks for about an hour to talk about, one of his favorite topics of conversation was leadership and growing his skill set in the leadership realm. And over the last four years, I was able to assist him with some of his endeavors to participate in the National Administration Group with other leaders across the nation, and watched his skill set continue to grow. And, and I'm extremely proud of Steve for, not only for putting in the time and effort to make the connections in leadership, but also extremely proud of him for the risks that he's taken. We talked quite a bit about growing and moving into the role of assistant superintendent, which was his goal. And I can truly say this, I think he's found a match for him as a leader. He has shared with me that they're off and running, having conversations regarding leadership with his new superintendent. It's going to be a very difficult shoes to fill at Southern Middle School, but I do want to wish Dr. Burnham the best as he moves into the next phase of his leadership life as an assistant superintendent. The good news is, we can continue to partner with him, because he's right next door. But we are going to miss him tremendously. And I just want to thank him for his years of service to the Wilson School District. He is a fine, fine man, and a very good leader, and we're gonna miss him tremendously.
Thank you. Again, congratulations, Dr. Burnham, and wish you well. Any other miscellaneous items? Committee reports. Burke's Career and Technology Center, Mrs. Casper.
Thank you, President Hart. We met, our last meeting was at the West Campus and via Zoom on Wednesday, April 28. Dr. Michael Stauffer was approved as the new Executive Director of BCTC beginning July 1, 2021. Currently, the NOCDI performance testing is happening beginning today, and until this coming Friday, May 7. New student orientation is scheduled for May 18 through the 20th, and it will be held at both campuses, running at the same, on the same nights. They will invite students to bring up one parent, and they are currently working on a map for flow and signage to stay within the safety boundaries. On May 19 of that orientation, Student Services will be available to answer any questions. The counselors and facilitators will be on Zoom to meet with parents. The Senior Recognition Celebration is being worked on to showcase students within a virtual presentation. June 1 will be the celebration, but the video will be available after June 1 for viewing. I also want to recognize Wilson students receiving honors during this last grading period. Nathan Kreveling for Preparation for Adult Life. Bridget Burkhart for Service Occupations. David Nowiki, Jr., Computer Systems, Networking and Security. Zoe Teeter, Sports Medicine and Rehabilitative Therapy. Rob Calhoun, Automotive Technology. Wedgie Cadet, Cosmetology. Ava Levering, Culinary Arts. Hannah Wyatt, Early Childhood Education. And Victoria Ostang, Health Occupations Level 3. Congratulations to all those students. Our next meeting is May 26, and that's my report.
Thank you. Wilson Equity Task Force, Mrs. Casper.
No report there. Our next meeting is this coming Wednesday, May 5.
Great, thank you. Burke's County IU, Dr. Kennedy.
I do not have a list for the Burke IU feedbacks since our last meeting, but I do have a curriculum committee update.
Sounds good.
We started our curriculum, the committee meeting was updating on secondary math. Mr. Case, we've been doing these a lot, but we didn't have them in the public. But these PowerPoint are done, and reiterated their philosophy on updating our math sequence. And I'm appreciative of that, so that they, you know, explain themselves once again. I think they've done a lot of work on that, and I'm really proud of our math department for that, as well as our science department. We had a celebration of the art department, from highlights from the secondary and the elementary art teachers. We got to see some PowerPoint, really great art. It was really interesting to see the difference between the students who were online and the students who were in person. It's really, really interesting. The music department, what has been honored in the 2021 best DVD for musical education from the M. P. Music. And at first, I thought, you know, we could sell them on YouTube, but they had such a great idea. We wouldn't sell them to us. I couldn't even use one if I tried. We are getting new accounting textbooks, and, rolling. We are, oh, we just approved the pre-K curriculum for Berkshire Heights. And lastly, they're trying to, oh, not lastly, I lied. Also with the Berkshire Heights, they're piloting a lunch program, which, as a former Berkshire Heights mom, makes me completely jealous. They're going to provide lunch for free for the Berkshire Heights students in May. Then they're going to see if the parents liked it, see if the kids liked it, and then hopefully, they'll be able to offer it next year. Lastly, they're trying, the curriculum committee and the elementary principals and administration are trying to keep as many of the end-of-year elementary traditions as they can. For example, there will be a red and white day, it will be limited, and parents will not be allowed to visit. There will be a moving up ceremony, but it will be a virtual moving up ceremony.
Well, the kids will be live, it's just a...
They're getting recorded individually by class.
Right, so that the parents can see it.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Burke's CID, Mrs. Schlossman. Thank you. Extra curricular, Mrs. Cocker.
Yes, I have an official report. Our next meeting is next Monday, May 10 at noon.
Thank you. Facilities Committee, Mr. Negreeny.
No report.
Honors Committee, Mr. Martin.
Yes, we met today at 4:30, discussed the fuel sharing agreement, which we approved, and thank you for that. We also took a look at our budget year-to-date from original forecast, and we're doing much better than we anticipated. Still, things aren't rosy, but it's much better than we anticipated. We looked at the budget for presentation for next, our next board meeting for approval. We requested a couple tweaks to the presentation, so you'll see the full presentation at our next board meeting, and that's pretty much it.
Great, thank you. We moved to next one. Legislative, Mr. Martin.
Yes, well, they're back in session this week. A lot of things are gonna be put aside for a time being temporarily, because they have to deal with the redistricting due to the lost Electoral College. If you've been following that, this is the fifth census that Pennsylvania has lost a electoral vote, and that's not a promising thing for Pennsylvania, because we lead the country in that. The growth in Pennsylvania over the last 10 years was dismal, dismal 2%, and there were some negative growths in those years also.